I would like to call to order the Monday, May 12 meeting of the Oxford Township Zoning Board of Appeals. So if everyone would stand and pay respects to the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Secretary, please note the roll.
Noted. There is a quorum.
There is a quorum. Alright, so approval of tonight's agenda. One thing we do need to add is our annual election of officers to that. I would suggest we probably throw that in as item five and push everything down one. So six becomes seven, seven becomes eight, and eight becomes nine. Enough? Nine, ten. We got two nines.
Okay.
If someone would like to make a motion to amend the agenda.
I move. Okay, go ahead.
Seconded. All favor. Aye opposed. Okay. Moving on to item five, which is election of officers. So I will open the floor for nominations for chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals. Anyone would like to make a nomination?
I'll nominate Jim Butler.
I second.
Any other nominations? Seeing none, I'll do it.
One more year.
One more year. Why not?
Alright.
I will now open the floor up for nominations for, was it Loyster?
Mm-hmm.
Loyster.
I will nominate Mr. Walters.
I'll accept.
I would second that. So any other nominations? Seeing none, well, Mr. Walters, you are now the vice chairman of the Zoning Board of Appeals. I am now accepting nominations for secretary of the Zoning Board of Appeals. Anyone would like to make a motion, or nominations, excuse me.
I'll nominate my friend right here.
Would you please recognize him by name?
Cory.
Cory Bailey. Alright, so we have a nomination for Cory Bailey, the secretary of the Zoning Board of Appeals. Any other nominations? Having none, Mr. Bailey, congratulations. You are now the secretary of the Zoning Board of Appeals.
Thank you.
For your service. So moving on, next item on the agenda is the approval of our regular meeting minutes from October 14, 2024. Anyone would like to make a motion, any amendments? If not, we'll just over.
Still moved.
Moved and Mr.
Seconded.
Seconded. Moved and seconded. All favor. Aye opposed. Public comment for items on that on tonight's agenda, so if anyone in the audience has any public comment to make. Seeing nobody rushed to the lectern, we'll close that item and move on, move on to the next item, which is unfinished business. We have none. Next item is new business, and tonight we have ZDA case 25001. Cody Collier is the applicant. Property is located at 798 Hilbert Avenue in Oxford, parcel number 0429477004. The applicant is seeking the following variance. The applicant is seeking a variance from section 6.2D1B of the Oxford Township zoning ordinance to allow an accessory structure to be 6.5 feet from the north property line instead of the 10 feet that is required. So the way our meeting will work is I will announce the project which I've done. The applicant will come to the podium and make their presentation. The Zoning Board of Appeals will ask questions. We'll open the public comment. All comments will be directed to the chairperson. All comments will be closed. Board member will have answered, have a chance to ask questions if any. The applicant may provide a response if needed. Board members will deliberate on the request. There will be a motion, and then there will be a vote. So, is the applicant here? Please, go up to the microphone, announce yourself, name and address, and give us a.
My name is Cody Collier. I live at 798 Hilbert Avenue, Oxford, Michigan 4371. I do have some pictures if you guys would like to look through them. I did date, just in pen, if you guys would like to look through those right now. Just to go through on top of some of this.
Sure, this is your opportunity to.
Okay, so yes.
Let's start them here.
This is just how the building came together. Can you go back to the microphone?
Yeah, you got me too.
Well, I guess I'll leave these there. Try to make this easy as possible. But the structure was built in October in 2020. Some of these are just recent photos. And originally, it was just built up to, you know, be a small little shed. Like I said, it was built in 2020, so it's been five years. And it kind of just snowballed into making it nicer and nicer, so it would not be such a eyesore from the street. I think finally, it's actually looking pretty decent from the road. And the reason I built this in that area was because of that one photo from the driveway looking down in there. I have a double door gate and a garage door that is on the shed, and it's directly straight to it, so. Instead of the straight shot, it kind of looks, or it just makes sense to have that garage door directly in that place. And then if you can see the white shed that is, that existing there, yeah. So that back wall on that fence line is flush with it, so when I had decided to go through, it is, you know, just a flush surface. It doesn't have to jump. And then another reason I did not move it over at the time when it was built to is the tree that is leaning in that area as well, so.
That tree?
No, I don't know if that one necessarily shows it. I believe those pictures are written October 10th, October 13th. When the structure was up, you could see that that tree was leaning towards that shed at the time. Now it is cut down.
Yeah, this one.
Yes, so it was going towards that shed completely, and I kind of split the difference, and it worked out with being flush with that existing white shed. And we're deciding it was fluent, and. Since then, that tree had been cut down, so I guess in the newer photos that have been sent in, you can't tell that that tree is there, but it's something in another picture.
Anything else?
If there's any questions, I'm willing to answer.
This is here because it was an enforcement issue, correct?
Yes, there was an anonymous call that was built without permit.
Okay. And then you had submitted, from what I can tell, for a building permit?
Since then, I have, I've been trying to make it up to date, and I just want to make everything, you know, good with the city. As at first, like I said, I kind of just built it with some free lumber, and then now it's, it's nice enough to want this thing to stay, so.
Does it have a foundation?
It does. So it was sitting on, you can see in the original picture, well, that's where it is now, because there's concrete. I set it on four by sixes, big skids, so if there was any settling, it was set on a four by six. And then the opening end where the garage door is, concrete is poured in a U shape around it, so there'd be no chance of the. The wall plate ever moving.
So, finish, I'm sorry. So the structure itself doesn't have a foundation?
Yeah. How deep is the foundation, do you recall?
The entire thing is forward with that forward slab, and much deeper towards the back.
So how deep is the foundation into the ground, or is it just on a slab? A six inch slab?
Slab.
It's on that, so the foundation's really not a foundation, it's just like a concrete slab?
Correct.
Is it sitting on an actual cement footing or on the four by sixes?
Four by six.
What's underneath the four by sixes?
Inbuilt, integrated.
Oh, that's a four by six.
Yes.
So it's, there's no footing underneath the four by six, just?
Correct.
So there is no foundation?
No, it's inbuilt, concrete.
Inbuilt with concrete.
Wrapped around.
Okay, so it has a slab on the inside and the outside as you approach the front of it.
Is it a slab on the inside?
So this slab here. So this is all concrete inside, and you have that slab.
Yeah, so there is interior pictures as well.
The structure that's behind it, is that on any type of foundation? The one that you have the adjacent wall on?
I can't see underneath that one. That has a finished floor, but that's been there since I purchased the property.
Would it be easier just to describe each picture to?
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah, if you want to.
Just so we'll, we'll give it to you and then you'll have to describe it, is that how?
Be helpful to us. Sorry if I got them completely out of order. Just I think it would help.
I figured I'd pass them around. So this is all of them. The very first photos were the existing shed that was torn down, which you saw on October 20th, or October 10th in 2020. So that been from, that's the angle from the street. So it's an old rusty metal shed that was torn down.
If you could do me a favor, as you go through this, if you could number those, that would help us. Because you're probably going to want to see those, have a copy of those pictures wherever.
So here's a couple of different angles.
Yeah, as you go through them, please just number them.
Gotcha. So in picture number one, all of these are on October 10th, 2020. This is a site from the street view looking into my yard, and then number two, that is looking into both doors of the existing shed on the left and the existing shed that was torn down on the right.
Yeah, if you can share it and show it to us.
Yeah, just hold them up when you're talking about.
We can see you here.
Gotcha. And then number three is another angle of all. So here's number one.
So that's looking into the property?
Looking into the property from the street.
That's the existing shed?
The existing shed was the rust that you see in that number one.
How far away is that from the property line? I estimate it.
Seventy-six feet from the closest corner to my property.
Okay.
Oh, are you talking about the fence line?
Fence line, is that six and a half?
Fence line, this white shed, and number two, the back side of that is my property line. So that's six and a half feet, which also is the new shed as well, so it carries parallel along the property line.
So when you pull in, you're pulling to the north, into the shed?
Into the north, correct. So that's where the variance is, I guess, requested. Number three is just another angle, more of a cross angle, if you can tell anything from that.
That's one, two, and three?
One, two, and three, yep. So the next stage in building with that October 13th. Just want to make sure this is completely in order. But October 13th, 2020, so a couple of days later, the metal shed was completely cleaned out.
And that's the one that's closest to the property line?
Yes. Well, I guess they're both in this same property line, so the metal ones are the.
Closest to the house.
So. Okay, I get rid of these now that they're done. October 13th. This is number four. See that metal shed was torn down completely, areas opened up. This is just another view of it. Almost went up, and as they were this, so the six. So they were pre-framed on the ground. The four by sixes were laid out in square. This back wall was framed with bull and then screwed directly to that white shed that was existing here.
Okay, so that's a two by, that's a four there, right?
Order here, but that is bonded directly to it, and the overhang that is on this side, you can't actually tell. So those were the lot order, but labeled as seven. So the open hang was cut off to have this building go flush to that wall. So the studs were filed, and that wall passed into it through the shed. Uh, number eight, once these are all set up, A-frame. I don't, don't have pictures of that garage door wall being built, but. But so. I guess having explained the next picture would be. The only thing that was left out. Now I'm jumping to 10. Did 16 inch center, two by eight, from one end to the other. I don't have a picture to show it, but on the back side here, this was a knee wall that's built level. So everything was pitched off this direction. Everything's top plated, double plated. The only thing that was missing was a rip of plywood for exterior sheathing. See, on the back right side, there is a knee wall that's replaced, that whole back side's level. The pitch, the roof pitches to this corner, so that's done. Letting now, these are. So May 7th, this is prior to siding. Could be on 11. Prior to siding, two windows were added, cut in and header the interior, which I can use preview before I get to it. The interior was not OSB yet at this time, so it was open framing. So I was able to cut the studs loose, header it off properly, add windows, and a finished door, which you can see is the beginning of J-channel around it. Again, case of software in, ready for siding. Twelve, let's do the interior for that. OSB, I was just going to do OSB for the interior instead of drywalling it. This is the finished shed here, 13. 13 shows how the roof lay on, went to the existing white shed. That window was still going to be replaced, not finished yet. Just a slow movement process a little bit. 14, this is picture of siding next to completion, so it's turning on a 45 degree diagonal. Now we're more towards recent photos. This one recently, this shows that that tree stump itself was five foot away. Wow, there's tape measure next to it, buttoning off the siding itself to the tree stump, which has since been cut down. This one doesn't really show you anything different. The interior, I guess, this is how. You can see some of the trusses. Trusses are Joyce. You can see that they're pitched and built with a knee wall on that right side towards the north, and now they're sloping. Concrete isn't in fill, and then. This show is the garage door from the street views, in the middle of the driveway, looking down towards the shed. So are there any other questions now? If you just have a timeline.
Mr. Bailey?
Yeah, I'd kind of like to thumb through them real quick, but I guess a couple of questions. I mean, without it being a foundation, what pitch is on the roof, what? I mean, is, is the rest of this thing to? There you go. Okay. Go ahead, I'll thumb through these.
Any questions?
Yeah, Cody, what practical difficulty did you have to build it where you're building, where you built it today, right? You, you got a driveway going back there. You, and I'm thinking, right, there's a 10-foot setback that's by our ordinance, right? Why couldn't you keep it 10, 10 feet? You had room, it looks like, on your, your presentation, but maybe there's something that I'm missing, or maybe there's an extenuating circumstance why you didn't keep it 10 feet off that lot line?
To be flush with that back wall of the existing.
Of the existing?
And then also with the trees when it was built. I was almost touching it at the time.
Okay.
So that's why it stopped there to, with the width that I would need for, you know, just a couple of feet for the garage door to be in the center, and then a couple of feet just for framing.
In that the existing shed is basically, there's no foundation, and it's really a temporary type of a shed. You, you actually could have moved that or slid it to meet the ordinance, right?
This is, actually, and there's electrical ran to it as well, so that comes in, comes on the back side of that north side in between the fence and the back side of that shed as well. So sliding that over with a, there was a trench dug, I believe, for it, because I do have a breaker in my amount.
Okay.
So it's on one switch from my original breaker. That one has its own breaker out there too.
Do you have any electrical run to the new one that you've built already?
Yes.
You do have it.
There is outlets, which are showing the interior pictures there, which has come off that one breaker.
And you don't have a permit for the electrical either?
I applied for all of, for the building and the electrical. And electrician come out and say, this would, this would pass for what I'm looking at.
Have you been doing all the work yourself on this?
Yes, that's why it's taken five years to get to this point.
And I have a question with, what is the function of this? Because it turned out a lot bigger, like when I read shed, I was thinking a shed, and then it's, you know, it's a lot bigger than shed.
The function's really just for storage.
Just for storage?
I do, I'm a carpenter, I own a business, so. I, I need it for storage and just functionality of, you know, how I run my business. I guess that kind of justifies that the work is done properly. I do it for a living. Got a lot better over the years, so that's why I'm starting to make that thing look a little nicer.
Are you a licensed builder?
I'm sure.
Any other questions? Well, thank you. Appreciate it. At this time, I would like to open up the floor for public comment. So anyone from the public that wishes to speak on this matter, please come forward. Say your name and address. What? Which comments?
My name is Suzanne Lanto. I live at 2079 Fernlock Drive. I received a letter about Cody requesting a variance. And I just wanted to come and state that I absolutely, my backyard is two yards away from his, and I absolutely have no issue with the variance at all. I have spoken with my neighbors on, one on this side, Joe Campbell, and two on this side that also, you know, butt up against, you know, two yards away, and none of us have an issue. And then Cindy Carter, whose backyard actually butts up to Cody's. She wrote a letter stating as such, you know, it, it's a nice looking shed, and none of the neighbors have an issue. Cody's been a great neighbor. He's a good, good guy. He belongs to the Fernlock Association in our subdivision. He's always helping out everybody, and we just, we just think that it would be, it's no problem for us that we were to allow variance.
Thank you. Anyone else from the public wishes to speak on us? Evening.
Scott Boquette. I live on Fernlock 2142, but I own the property at 818, which is just south of Cody's property. I'm Hilbert, which is surprising me to spell the H.I.L.L. It's H.I.L.B.E.R.G. I call it.
Yeah, the L's in there, right?
Yeah, just reading the document, you gave me that, so.
Yep.
Same thing. Cody's been a great neighbor. I think visibility, when you drive by, I think I can tell. I don't know what he was thinking when he built it, but visibly, when you walk by, when you drive by there, it makes sense where that, where that fixture is. You guys know about variances better than I. I just wanted to support him. He's been a great neighbor. My mom lived in the house for many years. He was very helpful. There's been no issues with anything that he's done, and I just wanted to come to support him, and I'm not sure what the pushback is, but he's done a great job of house. He's done improvements ever since.
Thank you. Anyone else?
We have one letter. We have one letter first.
You should also read the one that she has.
Can I get a copy of that letter? Handle that gentleman right there?
Gee, thanks.
Hey, you made the motion.
Secretary.
Thank you.
You seconded, sorry. Complicit.
Okay, so I'll read both of these. May 12, 2025, to Oxford Township, I am writing in regard to the property on 798 Hilbert, Oxford, Michigan. I do not object to the variance that is requested. You may contact me at any time. Thank you. Cindy Carter, 783 Sebeck, Oxford, Michigan, 48371. The next one comes from Ryan Chatley. Says, hi Cheryl, I received notice regarding Cody Collier's application for variance at 798 Hilbert, Oxford Township, to build an accessory structure 6.5 feet from the property line rather than the required 10 feet. As the owner, Big Sky Trust of the neighboring property at 778 Hilbert, I would like to formally register my opposition to this variance. I believe the township should uphold the established 10-foot setback requirement. Please feel free to contact me if you have any questions. Thank you, Ryan Chatley.
And is that the neighbor on the other side?
778 Hilbert.
It's to the north.
To the north?
Yeah, it's the one right to the north.
Okay.
And that's where that structure would be on, just like.
Any other additional comments or questions of the applicant?
Can I say another thing after?
I need to close the public.
You got to close public hearing first.
I will close the public hearing at 7:28. And move on to board member questions and comments again. Any questions?
I guess my first big question is, why not pull a permit for this to begin with?
Chris, please come to the mic. Question is, why didn't you pull one?
Originally, I didn't think it would need one. As I said a little earlier, this thing kind of came together slowly. At this point, of course, looking back now, I wish I did make all of this correct, and that's what I'm here to do today. To be honest, yes, I wish I did. I lacked knowledge at the time, and now I for sure know, and that's why I'm trying to deal with it as best as possible.
Any other questions of the applicant comments?
But another thing, just to clarify, there is no footing or foundation under that four by six, just dirt, correct?
Uh, correct.
And it's adhered to the smaller shed?
Yes.
So it's nailed to the smaller shed and the roof system?
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, thank you.
One more comment, I guess.
I'm sure.
One opposition that was sent in, they've just purchased the property, but then a couple of months, so this shed that's been there since twenty twenty, it's been there, you know, like for the last five years, so I just wanted to make that noted.
Okay.
In reviewing requests for a variance, the following standards for determining practical difficulty shall be considered, with no single factor being determinative, as outlined in section seventeen point eight, variances of the zoning ordinance. Number one, strict compliance with regulate restrictions governing area, setback, frontage, height, bulk, density, or other non-use manner, will unreasonably prevent the owner from using the property for a permitted purpose or render ordinance conformly unnecessarily burdensome. Other comments? Applies or doesn't apply?
I don't think it applies.
No.
Yeah, I don't think it applies, meaning you have a piece of property that's a hundred feet by four hundred feet. I mean, I don't think it's, the ordinance is unnecessarily burdensome in that regard. Number two, the variance will do substantial justice to the applicant, as well as other property owners.
I think it'll do justice to the applicant. I don't see how it would benefit the other property owners. Matter of fact, I mean, I'll be as low bold as to say, my fear is that it will become unsightly to the other property owners when this thing starts to sag and collapse and other issues, because it's not built on a foundation, it's gonna... It's a house built on sand.
Wonder what the building department would say about that?
It's not going to pass inspection, so even with a variance, my fear is it's going to have to come down and be rebuilt anyway. So I, I don't think it does justice to the other property owners.
I would agree with that. Other comments?
Oh, I agree.
Yes.
Number three, a lesser variance from requests will not give substantial relief to the applicant and not consistent with justice to other property owners. There's a lesser there.
How you can do a lesser variance?
It's already built, it's a ask forgiveness over permission. I don't know how we could give a lesser variance.
Wouldn't do any, wouldn't make a difference.
Right. What foot here, what foot there, doesn't make any difference.
It's built.
And the fact that it's built. Okay. The need for a variance to do the unique circumstances particular to the property, and not generally applicable in the area, or to other properties in the same zoning district.
It doesn't apply.
There's nothing unique in properties a hundred feet wide.
A stump or a tree, right? That's not really unique.
It's not the shape of the lot, it's not the topography of the lot. Really nothing truly unique.
No.
I mean, it's square.
Okay. Moving on, number five, the problem and resulting need for the variance has not been self-created by the applicant or the applicant's predecessors.
That doesn't apply.
No, it doesn't apply. All right, with that, I will entertain a motion. There is one to be offered.
I'll make a motion.
Okay.
Please. In case of twenty-five ZBA zero zero one, Cody Collier, the applicant, property at seven one eight Hilberg Avenue, with one L, Oxford, Michigan, four eight three seven one parcel, number zero four two nine four seven seven zero one four. I'd like to deny the variance from section six point two D, point one, point B, in the R one Oxford Township zoning ordinance that's proposed at six point five feet from the north side property line, instead of the required ten feet on the side setback, with the findings of facts and the the pictures and the presented articles that we have here before us today.
We have a motion, is there a second?
I'll second.
The motion is seconded. Any discussion on the motion? Roll call, please.
Walters?
Yes.
Bailey?
Yes.
Birch?
Yes.
Butler?
Yes.
Motion fast.
So your motion, your request for a variance has been denied. So we'll move on to the next item on the board, board member comments. Any comments? Seeing none. Are there seeing a motion for adjournment? So move.
Second.
Second, all in favor? Aye.
Aye.
Opposed? The R adjourn.